Councilors, Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. We acknowledge this country and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders as traditional custodians, their language, songs and dance. We pay respect to elders past, present and emerging. May we continue to peacefully walk together in respect and in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated.
I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies, councillor Landers?
Mr Chair, I advise that councillor Matic will be absent today and I move that he be granted a leave of absence from the meeting. Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that councillor Matic be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor, motion of condolence, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the city of Brisbane mourns the passing of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II. Her Majesty's service to the Commonwealth, its nations and its people will go down in history as a monumental and exemplary deed of public service. Her Majesty has been a constant source of stability and steadfast leadership in an ever-changing world. Fewer of us will remember a time without her and the world will never forget her. On behalf of the city of Brisbane, we pass on our deepest condolences to her family and all of those mourning the loss of Her Majesty. May she rest in peace.
Seconded. Thank you. Councillor Cassidy. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Well, it is a very sad day. It's also quite an unusual day, not one that I've seen in my lifetime, but one you may be interested to know that this chamber has seen once before. In preparing for speaking on today's motion, we were able to identify the minutes of the meeting, which was the 1,730th meeting of the Brisbane City Council here in City Hall on the 12th of February 1952 at two o'clock. And what happened on that day is very similar to what happened today. We saw the Lord Mayor at the time, Alderman Sir John Chandler, and also the leader of the opposition, councillor Bennett, moving and seconding a motion of condolence for the passing of the King. And I will table these minutes, Mr Chair, for everyone's interest, but one thing that was apparent in those minutes was not only the bipartisanship which was displayed and the sense of grief and loss that was felt and the gratitude for service, but also in the various ways in which the community remembered at that time. And in those minutes, it identified that on noon, at Noon Day, that the bells of City Hall were rung 56 times in honour of the passing of the King, who at that stage was 56 years of age. So today I can confirm that on our National Day of Mourning, we will be ringing the bells of City Hall 70 times at noon to acknowledge the 70 years of service of Queen Elizabeth II. For an incredible 70 years, Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II was part of our city, helping us to celebrate our highs and supporting us during some of our toughest times. Her Majesty's very first visit to Brisbane came in May 1954, less than a year after her coronation, and the visit was the start of a special relationship with our city and its people. The Queen has in fact been here in Brisbane at some of the pivotal moments in our city's history. The Commonwealth Games in 1982, the Queen was here in Brisbane. Expo 88, the Queen was here opening Expo 88. And of course, more recently, in 2011, after the devastating floods that impacted both Brisbane and Queensland, she was here, supporting our community, touring the devastated areas and also being part of a special ceremony with volunteers, emergency service workers and residents who were impacted. Now, while the role of the monarchy has evolved over the years, Her Majesty's great strength and wisdom ensured that she was both respected and loved around the world. Queen's kindness and compassion and care for the people of Brisbane will always be remembered. As we know, the Prime Minister has announced that Thursday, the 22nd of September, will be a National Day of Mourning and also a public holiday for all Australians. Now, going forward, most people will always remember where they were when they heard the news that the Queen had died. She was the steady hand which saw the governments of 15 UK Prime Ministers, from Winston Churchill to Liz Truss, and 16 Australian Prime Ministers, from Robert Menzies to Anthony Albanese, and also 16 New Zealand Prime Ministers as well, not to mention the many other Commonwealth countries and their leaders. I think there will never be another modern-day leader like her, someone who has not only witnessed the 20th century from a front-row seat, but has also helped to shape the 20th century. Some people may find themselves asking, what is the role of the Crown in a modern society? Now, the reality is, as we know, we are a fully independent, self-governed democracy. We and only we, Aussies, are responsible for our future and our destiny. We are a healthy democracy, and in fact, I would say that we are the world's healthiest democracy. But by the same token, institutions and traditions do help us to provide stability and continuity in times that are uncertain and changing. Now, these institutions, including the Crown, perform a non-political role which helps to counterbalance and provide stability despite political changes. And the Queen has been a source of stability and continuity like no other leader has been. As Queen, Her Majesty's focus was always to calm and unite people across the globe. It is far too easy for people to become divided, people in different countries, from different cultures. And so, in so many ways, the Queen worked to unite people. The nations of the Commonwealth are incredibly culturally diverse, yet Her Majesty was a unifying force across cultures and races and nations. And this unifying force went beyond the Commonwealth too. In fact, the Queen visited 117 different nations across the globe. Now, these were friendship missions. They were aimed at building closer ties between nations and their people. It's an incredibly positive legacy that Her Majesty has left when it comes to global relationships and also mutual understanding. And I wanted to touch on the many visits to Brisbane. They started in 1954 in March, when Queen Elizabeth visited Brisbane, Bundaberg, Okeechobee, Townsville, Cairns, Mackay and Rockhampton. It resulted in a Brisbane civic reception, a state reception, an executive council meeting and also here in City Hall, a Lord Mayor's Ball. In 1958, in February, Queen Elizabeth again visited Brisbane. There was a Brisbane civic reception, a state reception and functions at the exhibition grounds, the RNA, Brisbane Cricket Grounds and also at the University of Queensland. Queen visited again in 1963 in March. Visited Brisbane and Coolangatta and an enormous crowd gathered here at City Hall for a civic reception. In 1970, in April, Queen visited once again and her duties included opening the Brisbane District Courts. In 1977, in March, the Queen visited to celebrate her Silver Jubilee. And a civic welcome was followed by a dinner at Government House and a state reception at the Cloudland Ballroom of all places. In 1982, as I mentioned, the Queen came again for the Commonwealth Games and in fact, she was here for the closing ceremony, something that as a youngster I remember watching on TV. In 1988, the Queen was here to open a pivotal moment in our bicentennial year, but also Expo 88 here in Brisbane, which has transformed the city in so many ways. She also opened the Stockman's Hall of Fame at Longreach. And finally, the last visit in October 2011, when the Queen visited to meet the victims of the disastrous floods and storms of that year. But while she was here, she also got to witness South Bank as it is today. So she was here for Expo 88 and saw what it was, and then here to see South Bank and the wonderful legacy that that has created as well. And so, while we pay respects to the Queen, we also wish King Charles every success as he fulfills his new role. Filling the shoes of his mother is an incredibly massive task at the best of times, but filling the shoes of what many would say is an unprecedented modern leader, Queen Elizabeth II, is an even greater one. We do wish him the best and we also look forward to welcoming him, hopefully very soon, in Brisbane. I just wanted to finish by reading out the statement that I put up on the day the Queen passed away. Brisbane has lost a Queen and the world has lost an icon. Few of us will remember a time when she wasn't our Queen. Seems like she has always been there and always would be. Countless global leaders have come and gone, but Her Majesty has been a constant source of stability and steadfast leadership in an ever-changing world. While the Crown's role has evolved, Her Majesty's great strength and enduring compassion has ensured she remained a leader who was both respected and loved around the world. On behalf of the residents of Brisbane, I would like to pass on our deepest condolences to her family and all impacted by the passing of Her Majesty. Rest in peace.
Thank you. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise today to extend our sincere condolences on the loss of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II. The Queen loved Australia and its people, travelling to Australia 16 times, eight times to Queensland and here to Brisbane several times. She was the only monarch to do so and our city always welcomed her with open arms. On her first trip to Australia in 1954, it is estimated that seven of the 10 million Australians alive at that time saw the Queen in towns and cities across the nation. Her Majesty's presence incited excitement during the 1982 Commonwealth Games and her last visit to Brisbane in the aftermath of the 2011 floods offered great solace to those affected. In our age, there hasn't been a world leader and figure as constant as the Queen. The Queen has been a source of support and comfort for many around the world during difficult times. The monarch helped our nation celebrate significant milestones. Her Majesty had publicly and often acknowledged Australia's courage in the face of natural disasters and the nation's growth, progress and development. In her 70-year reign, including as Australia's head of state, the Queen saw countless politicians, world events and economies. She also lived through periods of great societal and social change. Queen Elizabeth's reign began in the 1950s. What followed here and abroad were things like legalising homosexuality, no-fault divorce, women's reproductive rights, counting Aboriginal people as people, abolishing the death penalty, same-sex marriage, the rise of a whole new form of authoritarian rule in Europe followed by its demise, and the dismantling of the British Empire and the democratisation of millions and billions of people around the world formerly under colonial rule. None of these things were because of the Queen or the monarchy, they were the product of liberal democracy and mass movements for change. But the incredible thing is how the Queen and the monarchy she so forcefully represented managed to survive and carve out such a special place for many people. This last 70 years has also been undoubtedly a period where a lifetime of dedicated public service was something of the exception, not the rule. I think for me, Paul Keating put it best in his heartfelt and generous tribute to Her Majesty when he said, "Queen Elizabeth attached herself to the public good against what she recognised as a tidal wave of private interests and private reward." She was an exemplar of public leadership, married for a lifetime to political restraint, remaining always the constitutional monarch. To the extent that an hereditary monarch can ever reflect the will or conscience of a people in the case of Britain, Queen Elizabeth assimilated a national consciousness reflecting every good instinct and custom the British people possessed and held to their heart. With her passing, her example of public service remains, with us a lesson in dedication to a lifelong mission in what she saw as the value of what is both enduringly good and right. That era has now passed. We have lost a significant part of us all. Rightfully, we must respect the traditions and customs of this mourning period. The commemoration of the Queen's life and legacy is above politics. There will be time for a discussion to happen in the future about what happens with the monarchy, of course. This is a moment in history and these kinds of seismic changes across the seas undoubtedly lead to changes in our own national consciousness. One without this Queen, of course, now and possibly in the future, one without a Queen or King ever again. The thousands of flowers and wreaths, the well wishes penned in condolence books across our city is testament to the deep respect Brisbane residents had for Her Majesty and that can never be taken away. There will be statues and monuments to Queen Elizabeth II, but her lasting legacy will always be dedication to service. She will be sadly missed.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Today, I rise to speak on this motion of condolence on the passing of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II. And I do so in the context of being not only a humble servant of hers as a British-born resident, but also as a citizen of Australia as well. Her service is something that we in this place should take on as a model exemplar. It is something, particularly with the length of service, that we could all aspire to, but many will never reach. To many across the world, for over 70 years, Her Majesty was a steadfast global leader. To others, she was a patron of many charities and causes which supported many people in need. Importantly, to her family, she was a beautiful human being who loved her children, her grandchildren and great-grandchildren, who are now her legacy. And she also dearly loved her lifelong partner and husband, His Royal Highness Prince Philip, her parents, King George VI and the Queen Mother, and also her sister, Princess Margaret. Today, we extend our condolences to the royal family on their personal loss, but also to all the subjects of the Commonwealth and other realms who, like all of us in Australia, have lost their monarch. I also acknowledge the many across the world who have pledged an oath of allegiance to the Queen in fulfilling their duty. My family members have loyally served the Queen in the Navy, Air Force and Army. As patron of the National Servicemen's Association here in Queensland, I know that in 1954, when Her Majesty was in Australia and met some Nashos who had formed up to greet her, it was a very momentous occasion for them. Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth was a woman of wisdom, dignity, grace, compassion, strength and incredible service. As a woman, Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II demonstrated her capacity to serve, lead and work hard for the people without reference to her gender. In a time when many women across the world looked to others for inspiration, Queen Elizabeth II led the way in demonstrating that skills, capability and knowledge are the best components that we need to take forward. In 2013, it was a privilege when I was in the role of deputy to the Lord Mayor on the restoration of City Hall here. When we were reopening and rededicating our City Hall, it was my privilege to ensure her portrait was returned here to this very council chamber in recognition of her role, but also our Westminster system of government. Over the years, I have corresponded with Her Majesty and the royal family on numerous occasions and I've brought some of the letters that I've received here with me today, but I just would like to reflect on a couple of excerpts of some of those letters. In 2013, Her Majesty and the Duke of Edinburgh conveyed that they were delighted with the arrival of their great-grandson, Prince George of Cambridge, now Prince George of Wales, and were much moved by the expression of good wishes. In 2013, and Lord Mayor, I know that this was a phone message that we shared at the time, and Her Majesty greatly appreciated the message of congratulations on the behalf of the constituents on the recent birth of the Queen's great-granddaughter, Princess Charlotte of Cambridge. And Her Majesty was interested to know how the Story Bridge in Brisbane was illuminated in pink at the time of Her Royal Highness's birth and was very touched by the affectionate support expressed towards her family on that occasion. And I know that was something that you certainly ensured occurred, Lord Mayor, so that is something that is part of our history here in our city. And this is one of my treasured components of the correspondence. It was a message from Buckingham Palace on the 60th anniversary of the Queen's ascension to the throne. And to just have that recognition of loyalty and support from Her Majesty was quite significant. On a personal note, having been born in the largest fishing port in the northern hemisphere and with heritage stretching back across England, Scotland, Wales and Ireland, I grew up abundantly aware of the statute of Edward II that any catch of sturgeon, otherwise known as the fish royal, had to be offered for the monarch's plate. There were a number of these occasions of offering to the monarch by my great-grandfather and grandfather, who owned multiple fishing trawlers over the years, not only to Her Majesty, but also to her father and grandfather. Today, I stand here and speak on this condolence motion as a mark of respect to our sovereign, Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II, to her absolute selfless service and dedication to duty. Over seven decades, there has been complete commitment to upholding her pledge to serve for as long or short as her life would be. Her legacy is in the next generations of the royal family who have had the benefit of her wisdom, tutelage and love. Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II will be truly missed. May she rest in peace.
Further speakers? Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak in relation to the condolence motion here today in the passing of Queen Elizabeth II. And it's a great, I think it's a, I sat down yesterday to put together some thoughts about what I wanted to say here today and I know we only get 10 minutes, 10 minutes or so to do so. And it didn't take me long to come up with three, three things that I wanted to reflect on in the life of the Queen. And the first one, well, there was the three things, which was devotion, integrity and respect. Devotion to her people, her family and her faith. 70 years of devotion that she undertook to the commitment to Australia, to England and of course, the Greater Commonwealth. In, when she travelled, well, we heard from other speakers over the last few days, there were 16 tours and visits to Australia. And, but the other thing too is that she travelled probably more than any other monarch in the history of the world. She was always, she was always going somewhere, whether it was within England, Ireland or Wales. She, her diary obviously was just filled with wanting to devote herself to her people. On the tour in 1954 here, she travelled to 60 cities and towns. And that would have been not easy travel in Australia at the time. A lot of that would have been by motor vehicle. And I'm sure there was a lot of dusty, dusty roads that they traversed in that time. And as we heard as well, 7 million of the 10 million Australians, 70% were able to either see the Queen or be in the general area of where the Queen was visiting. Integrity, of course, the world, in regards to integrity, in this world, integrity has sort of been jettisoned by so many of our leaders in this time. And, but the Queen, of course, her integrity was never really ever questioned, alright? Her honesty and truth never wanes. Many challenges and events in the Commonwealth, in the countries, even with her own family, but she always held up that her integrity would win out and did. Respect. You only have to look at every poll that I'm aware of, when the Australian public was asked about the Crown or about the Queen, the majority were in favour of the Queen and the work that she was undertaking on behalf of the Crown. But respect, of course, is a two-way street and she always respected, as we find out with the various stories that have come out in the last few days, she always respected anyone she spoke to and they gave her the respect in return. She respected the sovereignty of every country and its determination. She would offer her guidance when asked and support the outcome of the people's choice. One of the quotes that I heard recently and I thought I would quote, and that was that grief is a price that we pay for love. And of course, right across the world, there's a lot of grief. The people are grieving for the loss of the Queen. And, but I think that's a terrific quote to remember when even one of your own loved ones is failing or has passed away. Loving, compassionate and caring, I think we can all, those are all adjectives that describe the former monarch, Queen Elizabeth II. She was a leader that you could look up to. She was a sovereign you could depend on. A rare human being that embodied those humanitarian traits that we all should aspire to. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Strunk. Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Alright, thank you. I rise to speak on the motion of condolence on the passing of Her Majesty, the Queen Elizabeth II. I read this motion with some interest when it came through at nearly two o'clock yesterday. And I'm really sad that we did not do a motion of appreciation for her service. I understand that condolences are appropriate and I understand that, you know, this is one of the options available. But to me, the Queen has lived a life of service to others that has been marked by duty, responsibility and certainly a real sense of civic duty and pride through her whole life. And of course, that started when she became the heir to the throne quite unexpectedly and then had to step in to fill her father's shoes when he passed away in the 1950s. And even before that, you got a sense that she wanted to be part of society, to contribute to society when she served in the Women's Auxiliary during the Second World War. And she worked as a mechanic, I know, having seen and read many things about her, how proud she was of that service that she gave as a teenager back in World War Two. So to me, we should be appreciating the service of the Queen to Great Britain, to Australia as our head of state and to all the Commonwealth countries that have been part of her realm. And certainly, I think, based on her observations, that the decline of the British Empire led to the establishment of the Commonwealth. And I think that is something that the Queen has been instrumental in and has been extremely proud of right throughout her lifetime. It is very interesting, I think, in listening to the Lord Mayor and the leader of the opposition and councillor Strunk so far today, that so many huge global events have happened over her 70-year reign. And through it all, she has provided a continuous, respectful and steadfast leadership as a head of state that has not interfered with progress, that has ensured that a liberal democracy has flourished in pretty much. democracy has flourished in pretty much all the countries in which she is the head of state and certainly throughout the Commonwealth. And within those countries, we have seen enormous social change, technological change. And just so much has happened over that reign. And, you know, it, it, it's not necessarily, I think, something that another leader might have been able to allow just to roll through, as the Queen did. But she respected her role as a constitutional monarch. She realised that engaging in politics was not something that was appropriate. And yet, in all the countries where she was the head of government, they are the shining light of liberal democracies around the world, including our own. I, I want to pay my respects by acknowledging her service as a female world leader. There aren't very many of those and it's been really fascinating to see some of the coverage over the last few days and recognising that young women around the world have appreciated the Queen as a female world leader. To most of us, having grown up with the Queen, she's just always there. But I, I watched a lot of young women who were stopped on the street and asked what they thought, thinking, oh yeah, they won't value the Queen or they'll see her as some older lady. I mean, the grandmother of the nation came up quite a lot, but one young woman just called her a boss, an absolute boss. And I think that's a very good reflection in, in the modern parlance of a, a woman who was a head of state and exercised that role for over seventy years with such distinction and, you know, such civic-minded service to others. And I think that's the thing that you take away from the Queen. Yes, she came from a very wealthy background and, and was a very privileged person, but I, I believe that her faith and sense of duty meant that she gave her all to her role as the head of state. I know she was certainly the longest-serving British monarch and British head of state. She was the second-longest-serving head of state in the world, behind one of the French presidents many years ago. She was the patron of over six hundred charities and organisations. And supporting those works and making sure that the spotlight could be shined on all of those organisations in our community was, was an essential part of her role and that of the wider royal family. And that is a big part of, of what her service to the community was about. She was, I think, probably at heart, a fairly simple woman. She loved horses, dogs and a gin and tonic every day. So I think that's a pretty amazing thing. Her contribution in Australia was really quite significant over many years and there are two visits that I would like to reflect upon. The first is her Silver Jubilee visit to Australia in nineteen seventy-seven. That was the first time that I met the Queen. And I had the great opportunity to talk to my mum a little bit about this last night because the story as it goes is, I'd just started school, I'd just turned five and I'd just started school at Sacred Heart in Queenbyannan and the royal tour happened. And as they did back in the day, all the schoolkids were out of school, lined up on the street, ready to talk to the Queen. So, me, being me, I was put at the front and I think they probably thought I'd be very chatty if the Queen came over. Well, the Queen did come over and she stood and asked me what school I went to. And the story goes in our household, it's the only time Nicole's not had a response to a question. Mum said I just was looking at her transfixed and I didn't say anything. So the Queen looked up at mum, who was standing behind me, she was helping the teachers that day. And she looked at mum and mum said, oh, this is Sacred Heart. And the Queen then asked mum, so you're one of the teachers? Oh no, I'm just a mum here helping. And that's our, that's our first interaction and in fact, only interaction with the Queen. But I, I don't actually remember this, but I do remember all of the photos and mum remembers it extremely vividly. I think largely because in nineteen fifty-four, she was one of those schoolkids that was in the street for hours on end, waiting to see the Queen on her first tour of Australia. But most importantly, I think, for the community that I represent, was after the floods. And, sorry, it's the floods that are upsetting me. I just want to say that a lot of people find royal visits to be a little bit superfluous, I think, just a little bit of imagery. But the community that I represent was very badly hit by the two thousand and eleven floods. And when the Queen and Prince Philip came to visit, a number of people who had performed extraordinary acts of community service were invited to a function to meet the Queen and Prince Philip. And that included Melinda MacIntyre, who was the head of the volunteer effort for the floods in Yorongah, and she's now the coordinator of the Yorongah Community Centre. And her mate that she met when I sent her up to the centre to help out, Fiona. And they got dressed up, they bought hats, they weren't sure who they were going to meet, they, there's a lot of formality around the process, you're told you'll be in the room with all these other people. And Melinda said it's one of the best experiences of her life because their service to our community was recognised, the Queen and Prince Philip paid interest in what was happening in our community and the floods. And I know that the Queen's visit certainly was very supportive, as she has been through many other natural disasters in this country. So, as I said, it's probably a shame she's not back this year, but I, I hear some other royals might be coming. I would just like to again, put on the record my appreciation for the Queen's service to others, for her service to democracy, for her faith and her sense of civic responsibility that she performed throughout her life. I would also like to pass on my condolences to her family and all those who mourn her loss around the world. I would just like to finish by saying that I wish we would continue with the business of council today. The Queen was nothing if but somebody who was committed to duty and to, even up until the day before she passed away, she was carrying out her constitutional responsibilities. And we should be doing the same.
Further speakers? councillor Strye, ring another.
Thanks Chair. Rise to speak on the condolence motion and I think it would be remiss of me not to begin by acknowledging that we're on yagor and turbo country and paying respects to the elders of this place and to acknowledge that Brisbane is built on stolen land and that the British Empire has a long history of complicity in that oppression and dispossession of First Nations peoples. But I, I did want to add, add my words to this and, and also pass on my condolences to the, the family of the Queen and to anyone else who's mourning her loss. We have a strong taboo in society against speaking ill of the recently deceased and I'm inclined to respect that taboo. But on the other hand, we do also have an important value in healthy democracies that people in positions of power should never be, be beyond critique. And certainly now is not the time to be speaking ill of someone who's passed away, but on, on the, by the same token, I think it's very important that the death of a monarch is never used as a political weapon or a political tool to silence or discourage legitimate criticism of monarchies, which are very oppressive and unjust institutions in and of themselves. So I think we can simultaneously, simultaneously hold the idea in our head that it's sad that someone has passed away, but also monarchies are really unjust and we'd be a lot better off without them. What has been disappointing about recent political discourse around the passing of the Queen has been the vitriol and overt racism that a lot of people have experienced simply because they dared to say, oh, I'm not personally too fussed about the passing of the Queen. That's a sentiment that a lot of people feel. Some of us are really concerned and saddened about the Queen's death, some of us aren't too concerned about it at all. But those people who have expressed that latter sentiment have in some cases been subjected to really violent and awful abuse. And certainly I've copped that in the last few days with a lot of really racist and xenophobic commentary directed at my way, simply because I said I didn't care much for the British Empire. And, and I guess I would just want to point out to the elected reps in this chamber that different people do have different feelings about the Queen and the monarchy and don't want to say that anyone else's feelings are invalid, but just want to remind people to be conscious of that and to recognise that right now, for some people, the, the death of the Queen is, is a cause of, of significant grief and for some people, the death of the Queen is a cause of relief. And we as elected representatives have to acknowledge that and be mindful of that and recognise that particularly for First Nations people, for colonised peoples around the world, the Queen was a symbol of an oppressive regime. And that is the reality that we have to be mindful of in terms of how we conduct our business. And that's one of the reasons I have concerns about supporting this particular motion because I think it, it glosses over and perhaps, I, look, I don't, I don't want to be too negative, but I, I do think it glosses over some of the negative impacts of the, of the Queen's time in office and of the, of the British Empire and the monarchy as an institution. And I think it's, it's disappointing that we don't make enough space in public debate to have those mature and nuanced conversations. And I'm mindful that even as I stand up here and, and articulate these ideas, I'm exposing myself to bad faith, political critique or partisan attacks. But I'm simply seeking to eject into the conversation the fact that for some people, the, the Queen was not someone they particularly looked up to or felt affection towards and as elected reps, we do need to be mindful of that. I will, will also just point out in response to some of the commentary here today that contrary to those implications, monarchies are inherently political institutions that actively influence public policy and government decision-making. Sometimes monarchies are quite subtle about that and sophisticated, but I think it would be a little naive or silly of us to pretend that monarchs, including the British monarchy, are not political roles. They, they wield immense power, they do play a significant role in, in creating divisions between those who are the subjects of an empire and those who are the objects of exploitation and oppression by an empire. And certainly, the late Queen was no exception to that. There's a long and well-recorded history of the ways in which she influenced public policy and government decision-making, both for the better and for the worst. And I think it would be a disservice to her legacy if we didn't acknowledge that as well and recognise that, like all of us, she was a complex individual. She was not pure and good, nor was she evil. She was a human being. And I think none of us in this place can really claim that we actually knew what she was like or that we actually knew how well she did at her role because everything we know about her is translated and presented to us through a very well-managed media and PR machine that shapes narratives around monarchy and the royal family and crafts how we see and perceive them. And so I think we need to be a little bit clear-eyed about that. But yeah, I, I do think it is sad when, when anyone passes away and, and I'm, I do add my condolences to the family and to anyone else who's saddened by the Queen's passing.
Thank you councillor. Any further speakers? No further speakers. I'll now put the motion. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it. We now return to the meeting agenda.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you, Lord Mayor.
Under section eleven of the meeting's local law, I move that the notified motion on today's agenda be brought forward for consideration at this time.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor, that the minute, that the meeting be adjourned to another time. Okay, sorry, so it's a notified motion, my apologies, Lord Mayor, that, and the motion is, the notified motion that was later in the agenda has been moved forward. And it is, in the light of the death of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth the Second and in keeping with the convention, this meeting be adjourned until the day of the next scheduled ordinary meeting of council. Is there any debate?
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Yes, I am seeking further information from the Lord Mayor regarding the notified motion that's been provided today. Could he advise, when he refers to the convention in this motion, what convention he is referring to that means we have to conclude parliament, sorry, conclude council today?
Thank you. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. In accordance with the convention that is mentioned in this motion, it is a sign of respect of all three levels of government to pause momentarily their proceedings to show and acknowledge, show respect and acknowledge the passing of the Queen or the head of state or the monarch. Now, this is not something that Brisbane City Council is alone doing, this is something that is happening at all three levels of government. And right now, the federal parliament has been paused, the state parliament has been paused and so has the Brisbane City Council. Now, it is called convention, it is not law, it is not a requirement, it is simply a sign of respect. Now, as, as we've discovered today, respect is optional. Some people choose to show it and some people don't. And so simply today, I'm asking that councillors will join me in showing respect by joining the convention of the other two levels of government to pause our proceedings momentarily. Now, I know councillors are keen to get on with the ordinary business of this council. That will be the opportunity that comes at the next scheduled meeting. We have done this before, that we'll get ample opportunity to have this say on whatever submissions come through and whatever issues come up, but I'm simply asking councillors...
Point of order, Chair. Point of order to you councillor Strye, ring another.
Will the, may I take a quick question?
Apparently not, no.
Point of order then, Chair.
Point of order to you.
I was just wondering if you could clarify the rules for me. If, if this meeting is adjourned, does that mean there will be essentially two question times on the next date of the ordinary meeting?
Correct.
Thanks.
As I was saying, Mr Chair, we'll have the opportunity to have the meeting that was scheduled for today at the next, at the date of the next ordinary meeting and in fact, there will be two meetings on that day. So two question times, two E and C reports, two lots of committee reports. We've done it before, in fact, for the February floods. So councillors do know the drill and I'm simply asking that they join me in showing some respect on the passing of the Queen.
Thank you. Further debate? councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. Rise to speak against this notified motion. Just picking up on some of the things the Lord Mayor said, and, and I accept that, that there is a convention here in Australia, not one that is shared in the United Kingdom Parliament, they have continued business. And obviously an opportunity, obviously an opportunity for, for, for members of parliament, former prime ministers in that chamber to speak and, and offer their own condolences officially, but that, that has continued. There, there obviously is a convention in Australia where parliaments are able to delay their sittings to maybe a week or two weeks later. That's not something that's available to this council. The advice we received back in February is that once the sitting calendar is set and scheduled, this council must stick to it, other than by resolution of the council itself in changing that. So what we have, which has some similarities to the delayed meeting or the adjourned meeting in February, is that it'll occur at the next meeting. The difference here is that the next meeting was the week after in February, the next meeting we have is the last week in October. So I do accept what the Lord Mayor says in that the state parliament and the federal parliament is pausing momentarily because they can make those sitting days up. The state parliament and the federal parliament are scheduling extra days to make up for that lost time. That's not something that is being proposed here today. I think the city, the city, the residents of Brisbane and this council has shown solemn respect. We've just had a condolence motion and seeing people streaming into City Hall from the moment those condolence books were placed there and seeing people lay tributes up at, at Government House and signing official condolence books shows that, to me, that the people of Brisbane are certainly showing that solemn respect. But there are important issues for council to consider. When we don't meet as a council chamber, as elected representatives of Brisbane, a lot of things are delegated to the Establishment and Coordination Committee in the absence of a council meeting, or to council CEOs. So I would certainly like some clarification from the Lord Mayor when he sums up or, or another speaker, in that any of these items before us today are going to be delegated to E and C or to the CEO to make decision? And then we will simply be, be presented with an information report after recess, like all of the other decisions that E and C would make over that long recess period? Or will all those matters be carried over and then be open for, you know, basically a truncated debate on the twenty-fifth or... a truncated debate on the 25th or 24th or 25th of October? We do show respect for the passing of the monarch. We've done so today and we continue to do so. But in picking up something that councillor Johnston said, the lesson we learnt from the Queen was a dedication to service, working every day of the week, and we think we can probably do both today.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Sri Ranganathan.
Thanks, Chair. I don't want to drag this out too much, but just wanted to place on the record that I'm also firmly opposed to adjourned in the meeting. I take issue with the suggestion that there's a convention that's been established, because my understanding is that conventions tend to emerge through repetition and a general consensus that this is the way we're going to do things, because that's the way we've done things in the past. But there haven't actually been enough deaths of monarchs in the lifetime of Brisbane City Council that we can say that a convention has emerged. And a lot has changed since the passing of the previous monarch. So I wholeheartedly reject any suggestion that there is a convention that Brisbane City Council should adjourn when a monarch dies. And I have consulted with a couple of colleagues in other council jurisdictions around Australia, and they were all quite amused by the suggestion that Brisbane City Council was adjourned or delaying its meeting. As far as I'm aware, other councils in Sydney, Melbourne, et cetera, are not taking a day off, and I don't think there's any good grounds for us to do so here either. I also think it's, you know, it's kind of weird. Like when people in this chamber have close relatives pass away, we don't take a day off as a sign of respect, even though that's probably something that's more significant to more people in this chamber. I'm much less concerned about the passing of a monarch in another country than I am about the welfare and feelings of our colleagues here in this chamber. And so I think it's a bit odd that we would cancel an entire meeting because someone we didn't really know has died. It's, it just, I mean, we're getting a public holiday anyways. I would have thought that should be enough. I would just add though that, and I hope the mayor would be gracious enough to seriously consider this, that it would be, I think, advisable to start the adjourned meeting slightly earlier in the day on that, when we return from the recess period. And I'd like to ask that the LNP administration consider starting the meeting at 12 o'clock, for example, so that we're not all stuck here until like 9pm and so that we don't end up in a situation where the meeting has to be adjourned or carried over or whatever. I've sat through some pretty late council meetings in this chamber in the past, and it's really annoying when we're still stuck here at 9 or 10pm, when we could have started...
Deputy Mayor, please.
When we could have started earlier in the day. So I'll leave that suggestion with the LNP councillors. Perhaps they would consider a motion that the adjourned meeting can start slightly earlier than the 1pm time. There's no point me moving it because you guys won't agree to it unless you've moved it yourself. But please do consider that, because I think it would be nice if we could start an hour earlier and therefore get home an hour earlier as well.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Right. Talk about a way to blot your copybook, Mr Chairman. The Lord Mayor on one hand wants to commemorate and venerate Queen Elizabeth II as the Head of Australia, but then shirks his own duties in this place and fails to honour the significant service that she has exhibited right throughout her life and her devotion to duty. It is ridiculous that the Lord Mayor is proposing to cancel the second council meeting of the year. Not once, first time for the floods. This is the second time in this year, 2022, that the Lord Mayor is cancelling a council meeting. Now, the outcome of that, the Lord Mayor I'm sure will stand up and say, "Oh, I'm causing a fuss over nothing." But the outcome of that decision is that there are a bunch of decisions now that sit in limbo for six weeks until council resumes in October. There are, there is a huge agenda today that is supposed to be discussed, planning changes, annual reports, financial reports, and petitions, and everybody is left in limbo for six weeks because of a non-existent convention. If there was a convention, if there was some, you know, long history of doing this around the world by councils, we would have heard it from the Lord Mayor. But what do we get? We got silence. This is a confected approach to dealing with this issue. The outcome of it is it actually undermines our democracy, because it lessens the transparency and accountability of this council to rate payers. And I can tell you one thing that I know about the Queen. Every single day, she did her job. She did it up until the day before she died in swearing in a new British Prime Minister and seeing the old one out the door. But it's too much hard work for the LNP and this Lord Mayor to actually pay their condolences and respect and then get on with the business of governing the city of Brisbane, which is what we are paid to do. I think that the Lord Mayor has forgotten that it's not just about being seen to do the right thing, it is actually doing the right thing. And he's not doing the right thing by cancelling the council meeting today. And I find it abhorrent, because the outcome of it is, when we resume in October, this huge meeting will be jammed into a Tuesday afternoon, where the first meeting back from session is usually quite large, and we are all going to be put under enormous pressure, meeting till very late at night, because the Lord Mayor doesn't want to do his job today. Does not want to do his job today. He's getting a day off next Thursday, where he can go out and he can grieve in the way he wants to grieve on the National Day of Memorial, but today's a workday. And I don't think for one second the Queen would think that we should be shirking our duties like the Lord Mayor and the LNP want to do today. So, I wasn't going to move the motion, but I am now, and you can thank councillor Sri for that, and he better second it. Yeah, I'm sorry, Sri Ranganathan, I apologise, councillor Sri Ranganathan. That I understand that the Lord Mayor wants to, you know, change things or respect the Queen, but we can't not do our job as well. So I'd like to move an amendment, which I'll do in a few minutes. But I just want to say that it is just not acceptable that this administration, which has been in power for far too long, repeatedly, repeatedly now, is cancelling council meetings because it is not convenient for them to do their jobs. That is the sign of a tired and out-of-touch administration. And it does not serve our city to put off the business of government, to put off the business of service to the people of Brisbane. And it is unacceptable that so many important issues today are not going to be up for debate, including, you know, the financial business of this city. I find it just appalling that the Lord Mayor is doing this. There is no reason to do so. I too, like the leader of the opposition, have noted that the fact that the British Parliament is still sitting. I'm pretty sure that whatever convention that the Australian Parliament's got going was probably written 70 years ago or 80 years ago, and no one's probably updated it since then. That could do with a little bit of updating as well, because the proper place to pay your respects is within the system of, the democratic system, that the Queen was the head of, and now King Charles is the head of. So I just do not understand the Lord Mayor's thinking here. It is not disrespectful to get on with the job. That was what the Queen was all about. It actually, I think, disrespects her memory and her service by failing to get on with the job that we are here to do. And again, the real and practical outcome of this is the Lord Mayor's decision lessens the accountability, the scrutiny, and the transparency of the decision-making process at this council, which I can tell you the LNP are doing a very bad job carrying out. It is just unreasonable that we will have to do all of this, have two meetings on one day. It is extremely difficult and unpleasant to do that. It's difficult for the clerks, it's difficult for families, it makes it a really long and draining day for everybody, and no doubt that meeting back in October will be. So I'm going to move the following amendment, that delete the words "after" and "until" the day of the next scheduled ordinary meeting of council and insert "an additional ordinary council meeting is scheduled prior to the next scheduled meeting to replace the lost sitting day in reflection of Her Majesty's sense of duty and civic responsibility."
Sorry, councillor Johnston, I didn't get all the words, so I assume we're going to circulate that.
Yep.
Can you repeat it, please?
I can. Billy. Thank you. Billy has a copy, and I do have other copies here as well.
Oh, thank you. Now received it. Has this been seconded?
Yes.
Seconded, okay. Councillor Johnston to your amendment.
No, no. Look, I'll be very quick. I've prosecuted my argument already. I don't think we should be adjourning the meeting today, and if the Lord Mayor votes against this amendment, which I'm sure he will do, then I'll be voting against the substantive amendment. I would really prefer we just got on with the meeting today, but the LNP have the majority here. But I don't want to put everybody under pressure to jam two meetings into one, and I think we should reschedule this day for the meeting as soon as possible. I haven't specified a date, and I'm sure the Lord Mayor can do that, but that is exactly what the Prime Minister of the country did. So the Prime Minister, Anthony Albanese, has rescheduled the lost sitting week as soon as he possibly could, after all the formalities have been undertaken. So I don't know why this Lord Mayor is not doing the same. But as I said, I would much prefer the meeting continue today, but I want to put another option on the table to see whether this might be acceptable to the LNP.
Thank you. Further speakers to the amendment? No further speakers to the amendment. So we now move to the vote on this amended motion. All in favour of the amended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
The noes have it. We return to the substantive motion. Any further debate on the substantive motion? Lord Mayor?
This afternoon, as we were gathering together before this meeting, I said to my colleagues, "Let's see how many councillors try and make this all about them and all about what day one." I had hoped that no one would do that, but today sadly I was proven wrong. Now, when councillor Cassidy, as the leader of the opposition, gets up and complains about this, why isn't he complaining about the state and federal parliaments doing exactly the same thing? Labour governments at both levels doing exactly the same thing.
Councillor Johnston, please.
And in fact, the claim that this meeting has been cancelled is just plain wrong. It has been postponed, it will be rescheduled, and it will be held together with the next scheduled sitting day. It is not being cancelled, it is simply being postponed. There's been a lot of false claims that have been made already in a short period of time. The first one was quite breathtaking is councillor Sri Ranganathan's suggestion that everyone's taken the day off. Hands up, is anyone taking the day off today?
No.
We're actually here.
Yeah.
And we've been working all day, and we will continue to work.
Four p.m.
So I'm not sure about this idea of taking the day off. I don't know anyone who's taken the day off today, and certainly the members of my team aren't taking the day off. It sort of indicates a perception that the only thing that councillor Sri Ranganathan and councillor Johnston seem to get, think they get paid for is a couple of hours on a Tuesday afternoon.
Councillor Johnston, please do not call out from across the floor.
Now, I know that certain councillors love the opportunity to come in here and wax lyrical for a couple of hours and then vote against everything, but there's actually a lot more to our role than that. It is an important part, but it's only one part of a very complicated role and an ongoing role. And so our team continues to operate to provide services and projects for the people of Brisbane all the way through this mourning period. But what we're doing is we're pausing the politics. We're pausing the politics. Unfortunately, some people didn't get the memo. Some people use this as an opportunity to play politics, and it's really disappointing. But the whole point of the conventions, whether they be federal, state, local, whether they be in the UK, is to pause the politics. The business of council continues day by day, the services continue, the rubbish gets collected, the roads get resurfaced, the footpaths get redone, and the parks get cut, but we pause the politics for one meeting. Now, in state and federal parliament, they're wiping clean days and days of sitting, days and days of sitting. One meeting, one meeting...
Councillor Johnston.
In this council has been paused, and we will re-adjourn in accordance with the next scheduled meeting. Now, there's also been another false claim that, "Oh, the UK parliament is meeting." Well, what's the UK parliament actually doing? On the first day following the Queen's death, the elected reps got together to declare their allegiance to the King. That's what they did. And then on day two and three, they all took the opportunity to speak and pay tribute to the Queen, similar to what we did today. That's what they did. And then they paused for 10 days following that. So we've heard some lies being peddled in this chamber today. This is consistent with what is happening, not only at the federal and state level, but also in the UK parliament as well. And it is simply about pausing the politics to pay tribute and show some respect. I didn't think that would be a hard decision for councillors to make, and certainly on this side of the chamber, it's an easy decision to make. I'm disappointed that it is so hard for others to pause the politics.
I'll now put the motion. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Johnston and councillor Sri Ranganathan. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Clerks, give your result, please.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being 19 in favour and 6 against.
This motion is carried. The meeting stands adjourned.